This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, we're live.
Okay. Today is Monday, June 8th, 2020. It's 3:03 PM and I'm calling the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. We are meeting again remotely today so that we can appropriately social distance. I already did a sound check and I do have all three commissioners, Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Hunt here, so we do have a core. First up is the adoption of the consent calendar. These are items of a routine nature, but your staff or commissioners can call for further discussion if needed. Otherwise, I will go ahead and entertain a motion. One thing I will say is under our execution of documents under consent calendar, just pointing out that our room block rental agreement between a hotel and us, and basically this is so we can amass quarantine people if needed, as well as putting vulnerable populations in those rooms. So just wanted to point that out. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion unless someone wants to pull something else out.
Move for approval of the consent calendar as presented.
I can get it as presented.
Hey, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks. All right, now, under reports, and we're kind of gonna like wander around a little bit in this, and I think there's even some things that have come up between when the agenda was was added to and corrected this morning versus what we're actually gonna talk about today, so just bear with us. But I think the first thing we want to get is a report from Public Health from Nicole Fields and Rebecca Austin, specifically on the Pacific Seafood outbreak. And I think as many people are already aware, over the weekend, we had many tests come back positive from employee testing that was done at PAX Seafood. So Rebecca and Nicole could give us what our numbers are currently at, how that situation is being handled. We'll go from there.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So this is Nicole. Total cases for the state of Oregon right now are 4,922, which includes 156 in Lincoln County and 2,145 negative tests in our county. Over the weekend, we received 124 positive tests connected to the Pacific Seafood outbreak. They were notified, I believe on June 2nd, that they had that there was one positive case and quickly decided to test all employees there once they had received a few more positives. So on Friday, June 5th, they tested all of their Newport facility employees. Out of the 376 that were tested, 124 were positive. That's 33%. And according to Pacific Seafood, 95% of the people that tested positive are asymptomatic. So now that we have the test results, let's look at the response. So Pacific Seafood has taken responsibility for initially contacting all of the people who tested positive. That's because this was done through a privately contracted laboratory, so the information is entered a little bit differently. And on our side, we don't have the complete case information since it went through a private lab. So they have notified everyone of their results at this point. And then they are going to be passing along a list to us with all of the confirmed cases, their phone numbers, address, and preferred language. And we will be contacting them in the next day or two to do the case investigation. Once we've done these initial investigations, we are going to quickly start doing contact tracing. Ideally, this is usually done within 24 hours, but with an event of this scale, it's definitely a little bit more challenging because it does take, you know, three to four hours to do each of the case investigations. And for 124 people, that's quite a bit of time. We are training up additional staff for contact tracing and case investigation. We held one training this morning to get people up to speed on doing that initial contact training, so they would be ready to start calling these 124 people. And we had about 15 people on that training. So we've got those folks up and running. And then tomorrow, we have a training for contact tracers. We've had some great support from community partners, including the Tribe and Oregon Coast Community College, and some other counties, like Benton County and Tillman County have reached out to us. And so we have another training tomorrow morning of about 20 people who will be able to help us do contact tracing in both English and Spanish. And that is my update. I'm not sure if Rebecca would like to add on to that, and I can answer any question.
Let's let Rebecca add on before we go to questions. Rebecca, you're muted if you're talking. Still can't hear you, Rebecca. Oh, okay. Well, I think we're having some sound trouble on Rebecca's end.
Oh, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I hear you. Yes.
Oh, gosh. Yeah, I'm having all kinds of troubles today.
I do hear you.
So I'm here. What do you need from me?
Is there anything additional you wanted to add on to what Nicole presented us? And then I think we probably all have many questions as well, but is there anything you wanted to add on?
So I'm not really sure what Nicole, maybe she gave you an update of numbers and where we are with the outbreak?
Yes, she did that.
Okay. And did she talk about contact tracers? Because apparently we're getting a lot of questions about that.
Yes, that we're training additional ones.
Yes, they're coming kind of from all over.
Okay, well, let's just go ahead and jump into questions then. And maybe I'll start with my list and then we'll move on to the other two commissioners. I guess one question I have is, you know, because a kind of non-local lab was used to test all these employees, it sounds like there's some issues or just delay in getting that list of who all these people are that we can start doing our job with investigations and contact tracing. So you said those people by the lab were contacted with their results. Were those people told to basically start isolating?
Yes. No, that's the... I'm sorry, the plant notified everybody, not the lab.
Okay, sorry, plant notified everybody. So they do have instructions to basically isolate and then are waiting to do this in terms of doing the contact tracing.
Yeah, they've been told to stay home for 15 days and to isolate.
Okay, great. Second question is, my understanding is that the plant itself, PAX Seafood, is going to be providing some resources to those people and families so that they, you know, able to have food and that kind of stuff. Are we going through this? Do we have confirmation that that is happening or when that is happening?
Yeah, so the information that we received from PAX Seafood is that they are allowing team members who are permanent year-round or repeat seasonal employees to have paid time off for COVID-19. What is unclear is if the temporary workers who are contracted through local staffing agencies are getting those same benefits. We also know that many of the seasonal workers and the H2B visa holders are living at the at some of our local hotels. So they're being put up there and that's paid for by the company. So they do have a place to live and to quarantine safely. And then Pacific Seafood is also providing meal support for those folks that are quarantined.
Okay, so they have the food service that they are working on. Great. I guess I would appreciate if someone could follow up, or if you need me to follow up and find out if those contractors are getting the same type of treatment that the other workers are getting. I think that's an important piece to kind of figure out in this. I guess the last thing, and Rebecca, you clarified this on the 1:00 PM briefing we had with the media, but I think it's important to kind of say it here, too. I think there's a lot of concern with some of the workers that were brought in from other locations. But as you said on that call, that while you're still working on getting that list, that, you know, it's not simply just an issue of people coming in from other locations, that a lot of these positive test results, or most of them at this point, are actually kind of our local workers. Is that correct?
As far as we know at this moment, Commissioner. We'll know a lot more as soon as we get that list.
Yeah, if I can add to that, too. They're from Pacific Seafood. When they talked to the Oregon Health Authority, they reported that the majority of the cases that they received that were positive cases were not the same people that are like living in hotels. These are people that are residents of our county, that live here, that work here, that have housing here, that are not kind of those transient workers.
I think that's just a really important piece for the public to understand in this is I feel like there's a lot of kind of us versus them stuff going around and people realize that, you know, these are people that are part of our community that we need to look out for and come together around.
Yeah, and Commissioner, this is Rebecca. I just wanted to say that when we do the case investigations and the contact tracings, we will be assessing everybody's needs to make sure they're getting what they need, you know, as far as food and medicine and things like that. So that'll be part. And we're just now in the process of setting up a system so that when we do have people that need some assistance, that we have a place to refer them to and that somebody can respond to them.
Excellent. Thank you. And I guess the last thing I would ask is, I had a lot of emails over the weekend, and I know our call center is getting hit, too, with people that, you know, think they had contact with either a positive or presumed positive or someone that works at the facility. And so if you think you have had contact with someone that works there or someone that was positive, what should you do? What's the course of action?
So if you think you have had contact with someone who's tested positive, best course of action is to just stay home and quarantine yourself for 14 days. This is a massive amount of cases for us, so we are, you know, gonna get contact tracing done in the next few days. But if you know right now that you've had that contact with someone who has tested positive, please go ahead and start your isolation now. We're here with resources. Feel free to reach out to our call center and then also talk to your provider. If you're asymptomatic or if you're having some symptoms, go ahead and call your provider. If you don't have a provider, you can call our federally qualified health center and they can kind of get you established with a provider. But it's important to talk to your doctor or your provider to see if you are in need of being tested as well.
All right, thank you. All right, Commissioner, go ahead, Rebecca.
I was just gonna add to that. We were all trained today to do case investigations, and we will be asking everybody for their contacts when we call them up. And so a close contact is, does include somebody that you've had contact with for over 15 minutes and you did not keep your six-foot distance or wear face covering. So that might be helpful, too. And we will be asking people, we will be clarifying that with everybody that we call. So that could help.
Okay, I guess an additional question I have is there's been a lot of concern from the fishing industry that, you know, as late as late last week was delivering product to that facility. And of course, when you deliver a product, you do have some, you know, some interaction with the employees that are working there. Well, reaching out to those fishermen that delivered there, will that be part of that contact tracing? Or is PAX Seafood doing that on their own?
It sounds like they would be a contact. As long as somebody says that, oh, yeah, I helped some fishermen offload and I wasn't wearing a mask and we didn't keep six feet distance and we worked together for 30 minutes, they would be considered a contact. And we'll help people understand that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Hall, questions from you for Public Health?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So it sounds like we are getting adequate resources in place, enough people to handle the handle the contact tracing for this. But, you know, a secondary concern, certainly the health and well-being of the people who have tested positive and of their contacts is paramount. But, you know, it sounds like this is going to be an investment of several hundred hours of staff time and thousands of dollars in resources. And is it all on the county? Or does Pacific Seafood as the employer bear any kind of liability or responsibility for any of this?
This is Rebecca, and I have never heard of a business with an outbreak ever having to pay for Public Health to respond to their outbreak.
Okay, thank you. One more question. I believe this was in the state's news release yesterday. And this was addressed in the 1:00 PM news conference, but I know not everybody was listening to that. And I've certainly heard from many, many people questioning this, the statement out of the state that the risk to the public from this outbreak is low. And, you know, what members of the public are saying that, well, these are people living in the community, circulating, eating, shopping in the community, you know, they're not living in a bubble. How, what's the basis for saying that the risk is low? And I realize it was the state's statement, not our.
Yes, it was the state's statement. And it is kind of hard to wrap your head around. But I think Dr. Sezla's point was that with such a high percentage of positives, that COVID is in our community. And so that leads us to believe that it's been in our community. So the more people are out and about and not wearing face coverings and not keeping distance, the more we're gonna see positive cases. So to maintain kind of a low-risk profile here, we do want people that have been exposed to keep isolated for the 14 days. And we want people that are out and about to wear their face coverings and to maintain the six-foot distancing. And of course, always be wiping down things and washing your hands. So I guess we can't say that enough. And if this gets the community to comply with those recommendations that have been floating about for the last month, then it'll be it. This is our reality now. There's no going back. So I'm not, I can't really defend the low risk because it doesn't feel particularly low risk to me when it's obvious that it is out in the community. But I think from Dr. Sezla's point of view, because it's an outbreak mostly affecting people that work in the fish plant, they feel it somewhat contained.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. No more questions at this time.
Commissioner Hunt?
I have a question, and I'll guess I'll direct it to both Director Austin and Dr. Ogden. To me, the issue of getting people tested still is a challenge. As I understand it, it still requires a referral from your primary care provider before you can be tested. Why do we have the limitation, limit, excuse me, limitations on getting people tested? Why, why, what's the holdup? Why aren't we able to test a higher volume of people?
Oh, this is Rebecca, and there's a couple things that are happening at the same time, Commissioner Hunt, that could help explain it. One is that we are still experiencing a shortage of testing kits and reagent. So it's not, that is not going to be fixed anytime soon. It's hard to imagine, but that is the case. And reagent is to a COVID test what gasoline is to a car. It makes us be able to do a test. So when we're out of reagent, we cannot do any more tests. So there is a huge shortage of reagents. And then the other part of that is there is not a lot to be gained by testing people that we've already put into isolation. Because even if they get a positive test, they're gonna still be in isolation. If they get a negative test, they're still gonna be in isolation. Because the test is one point in time, and they may not have a viral load that's high enough to be detected in the test. So we still make them quarantine for 14 days. So I think that's what Dr. Sezla was trying to get across, is the best thing we can do is just quarantine these people. And I know everybody wants to get a test. But to tell you the truth, if they're a close contact already, they're in quarantine. They're not going to work. They're not going out shopping. They're not having playdates with their kids' friends. They're home by themselves the best they can. So nothing's really to be gained by them getting a test, even though I know everybody wants to get the test. But we have to maintain these tests for things that we really need them for. Like if somebody were to show up in ED, they need to test that person right away to find out if that's what they have with COVID. Or before they do a procedure on them in the hospital, they need to assure that they don't have COVID. So that's what we kind of need to save our tests for at this point. I hope that explains it. I know it's just crazy craziness, but that's kind of where we are right now. And I don't know if Dr. Ogden wants to, I know she's scrambling around, too, and she wants to add something to that.
Well, I don't know that I could have said it better, Rebecca, but I will add that things are changing, albeit slowly, in that we are figuring out ways to get around our limitations. We're coming up with new testing supplies, testing media, innovative ways to obtain testing kits. It's just not enough to test everybody right this moment. And then, like Rebecca said, even if you did test everybody right this moment, it's a point in time. And we know the infection cycle is not, that's not going to reflect accuracy. Meaning, somebody gets a negative test right today, they go out, they hug somebody's neck and spend some close time with them without a mask on, and that negative test could now be invalidated. So it's difficult that way. But I will say that we have now changed our policy, even as of Friday, that if asymptomatic people come to us that are close contacts of a person with a laboratory-confirmed COVID-19 test, meaning, you know, this is a spouse that spends all their time, you know, with this person who has just now, you know, come up positive, then we, maybe we do want to test that person. Maybe people who live in congregate settings, like if, you know, if we have one person show up positive in a nursing home, we might want to test even asymptomatic people there because of how they live. We also, you know, have some other, you know, recommendations that people with disabilities or that English isn't their first language. I mean, maybe that throws them into a category of maybe needing a test a little bit more than somebody else. But again, you know, we just don't have enough to just have it be a complete free-for-all, nor would it do us any good. It would give us false reassurance. So.
Thank you. Commissioner Hunt, any other questions?
No, I appreciate the information. And I think it's important for the public to understand that, you know, the answer is not just testing everybody because of the points you've already made. But let me ask a little bit of, I guess, a clarifying question. What, who controls our access to the test kits or the medium that is needed for testing? I mean, is that controlled at the state? And how are those distributed? We've now got, what, 155 cases in our county? Does that move us up the ladder as far as, gee, now we need more tests? I would hope it would.
I'll let Rebecca go first. You'll know.
Yeah, yeah. So there are two different systems working here. Public Health has to work under the state Public Health Lab guidelines. And it's, we might get moved up on the list. I'm not really sure. I should try that out because I know we wanted to do some more testing with Samaritan, and they would need for us to get the kit. So I haven't made that call yet, but I will certainly try to do that and see what I can get. And then the Samaritan system, they don't work within the state system at all. They have their own labs that they're working with, and I'm assuming their labs that they're working with are providing them with their supplies. So maybe Leslie can talk about the challenges there.
Yeah, I can certainly add on. We now have in-house testing in Albany, and we are limited to about 120 tests per week with that unit. Not because that unit can't do more, but because that's all the company that runs the system will provide us, because everything's being rationed. So what we're doing is we're doing all of our inpatient testing that way. Anybody who comes to the ER and will be admitted as an inpatient, or anybody who is directly admitted as an inpatient, or later, you know, we have a reason to test, anyone who's in the hospital, we're doing that fast, you know, in-house testing because we can get less than 24 hours turnaround time on. And again, the limitation is the manufacturer of the machine that runs the test, provides a test kit. Now, for outpatient testing, we are doing all of our outpatient testing through legacy labs. And that is the legacy hospital system that is up in Portland. They are providing us with all of our test kits right now. They have never put a limit on them, meaning they have never said, you know, this is your upper limit and you cannot order any more than that. What we know, though, is that there is such a thing. They do not have an unlimited supply. So the more we ask for, little by little, the more we get. But we do know if we came in and said, we want thousands of test kits right now, they would say, we just can't deliver that because we have to do our testing, all the other contracts, you know, as well as yours. So, yeah, we don't have a number limit, but there is, you know, a limit, meaning they have to have the test media and the test kits that they put together for us. And then we swab them and then we send them back. So again, we can accelerate a little bit, but we just can't accelerate a lot. And that has been like, I think, in conversations with Rebecca, it's been like, oh, we could do 100 extra, maybe 200 extra. But when we start talking hundreds of people extra, like in a day's notice, that's when it becomes like, ooh, we can't really do that yet. So, and then I did want to go back. I don't think we answered your question very well about how to get a test. You know, that it does still require a physician's order. And the reason for that is sort of multifold. Number one, when this all first started, you really did have to have symptoms because we really did not have enough test kits to test anyone who did not have symptoms. And so as we're relaxing that a little bit, we're still having physicians control this because, again, we still do have, you know, some limitations on those kits. And so we need a gatekeeper, so to speak, although the testing, you know, sort of guidance is broadening, and there'll be more and more people. Now, that being said, you do not have to have a PCP, either Samaritan or otherwise. We can even arrange for people to have an e-visit, you know, that they just do over their phone. And we can get them a test ordered that way. So I don't want anyone to think that if they don't have a PCP already, if they don't have this relationship, they cannot get tested, because they very much can. We have it on our website, all the different ways to get tested. You know, it's certainly easiest if you already have that relationship, but it's just a number you call if you don't.
Okay, thank you.
And I think Rebecca Austin, I think you can also confirm that if the individual doesn't have a PCP, they are able to work through our Health Center, federally qualified health centers.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Well, I think that sheds a lot of light on the fact that, uh, there are some, it's complicated when it comes to testing, who can get tested, how to get tested and why more aren't being tested and frankly, the effectiveness of the, the testing. So, thank you.
Thanks. I, um, you kind of jumped in Leslie and I appreciate that, but I was hoping you could back up and just kind of give us an update from Samaritans in on, on, uh, potential hospitalizations we're seeing, um, related to this outbreak and if you guys are, you know, holding steady with PPE and that kind of thing.
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry to, uh, to, to depart before the words. Um, so what we have seen, um, within the last 24 hours at both of our coastal hospitals is our first COVID positive inpatients. You know, as, as you know, we've been seeing outpatients, um, little by little since the beginning, um, but we have not had, uh, an inpatient that we care for. Not that we didn't get plenty of practice because everybody who came in with respiratory symptoms, we treated them presumptively as they were positive, um, meaning full PPE and everything, uh, until we got a negative test that could then take them off precautions. So what happened, um, today is that, uh, or yesterday and today, is that we had one person that, um, converted while they were in our Newport hospital, meaning we got that positive test instead of a negative test. And they are still here and they are doing well. Um, at North Lincoln, we got a person who had an outside positive test, who showed up in our ER quite ill. They stayed overnight, they said, they showed up yesterday afternoon, stayed overnight and had increasing requirements, um, and, um, had to be transferred because of their need for a higher level of care and they are now in Corvallis. So those are our first two cases. Uh, we have not seen, um, a big surge in patients. Uh, we currently have, um, three other people that we are ruling out in our Newport hospital. None, um, are in our Lincoln City Hospital. So it was just the one person. Um, and we're just following what's happening in our ERs very closely. Um, you know, just making sure that we know, um, if we see an uptick, that we're getting information to you guys or, you know, um, and, and a lot of our other partners, um, who, who need to know this. Our PPE supplies are very good. Um, we always list it as cautious though, because we don't have a completely open supply chain, meaning we can't just pick up the phone and go, hey, we want 50,000 more. And it just, we know it shows up like it used to happen, but we have not had the difficulty that some other folks have had obtaining. And the other thing we've done is we've just socked it away. Every single place that we can find it, we've gotten it and it's just sitting in a warehouse waiting. Uh, even reprocessing, we've been reprocessing N95 masks with the Patel, uh, company now down in, um, Eugene, and we're just stockpiling those. We're not putting those back into use. Um, we just have them available if we need them. So we're doing very well with PPE, but what I did this morning was ask my hospitals just to make sure that they had a little extra on hand, um, because we just don't know where this is going to go. And, um, since the infections are here more than they are in Benton and Lynn County, um, just to, um, make sure that we had plenty of everything on hand and, um, would not find ourselves in a situation where we had to make emergency runs to the warehouse. So, um, so that's what we're doing. We, we're sitting in as good a situation, I think, as we can, uh, in that we have our surge plans ready to go. I, everyone is, I mean, this is what we've trained for. Um, and we'll continue to take great care of patients. Um, of course, all of our Samaritan hospitals are on standby. They took our transfer patient readily, um, and easily this morning. We are, we're having no problems with bed capacity across the whole region. So, um, so it, it's as good a situation, I think, as we could, could ask for.
Thank you for that update. And I, I just want to say that I think as you and I had talked, um, previously, um, you've had a lot of, um, sources for PPE, um, come from local people that had, you know, contacts in, in different factories or companies or what have you. And so, um, just said thanks to all of those citizens that have, you know, kind of reached out and helped, um, help supply that PPE inventory. Um.
So, Madam Chair, this is, I have a, I have a follow-up question for Dr. Ogden.
Sure.
Um, you indicated you have, uh, uh, what, uh, two, uh, and now.
You're cutting out on us, Commissioner. I can't hear you.
Uh, virus patient in the hospital. What, what's the hospital's capacity? My audio is.
I think we're losing you, Commissioner.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I've got a, I've got a weak internet connection. Um, my question was, what's the capacity for COVID patients in Lincoln County?
Gotcha.
In a hospital.
Yeah. So our, as you guys well know, our, um, critical access hospital status caps in a normal time period as at 25 beds. And we actually built those 25 beds into the Newport Hospital and because of a lower census, we built 16 into the, um, the new, uh, Lincoln City Hospital. Now that being said, that's on a normal day and all of this stuff has been relaxed for us. So we have surge plans that allow us to find space for over 150 patients in the Newport Hospital and over 70 patients in the Lincoln City Hospital. So, um, we have those surge plans. Likewise, we have ventilator surge plans. Um, we have done some crazy things like rented all of the Lynn Care Home ventilators, um, en masse, like all 23 of them that they had, uh, here on the coast. We've also, uh, bought a bunch of ventilators and those are still rolling in. And in addition, we bought 35 new anesthesia machines for our whole system that then double as ventilators. So our ventilator capacity has gone up remarkably and we've also developed ways to sort of rig things to be ventilators, even our Bi-PAP and CPAP machines, we can rig them up to, um, to have that capacity. So we, um, we have done a lot of work, um, that may not be acceptable in normal times, but is very acceptable in COVID times. And we feel like we're as prepared as we possibly can and we have the ability to shift, um, you know, resources as well. Um, those, for example, those ventilators that are, um, sort of sitting ready in Lynn County, if they did not need them and we did, then we can shift them here. So we have all kinds of, um, abilities to, to do some things across our tri-county region, um, because of, of our systemization. And, um, I, I should add that we also have been doing a lot of cross-training, meaning before maybe only a handful of people knew how to run ventilators and now almost everybody knows how to run a ventilator. And, uh, we have teams, we have intubation teams, ventilator teams, all kinds of things so that if we ever did have to go up to that 150 plus or that 70 plus, that we would have an orderly way and that everybody, um, would be, um, you know, already up and trained. So that's what we've been doing with our spare time and, um, we feel like, you know, we're as ready as we can be.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you. Very good information.
Commissioner Hall, any questions, um, from you for Leslie?
Yeah, if I could follow up on the testing and with, and you may or may not have an answer to this and all the caveats we've heard about, you know, testing not being 100% accurate, not wanting to give people a false sense of security. You know, I've had numerous people, well, a handful of people contact me and say, well, my relative lives in such and such a state and there anybody who wants to be tested can be tested. And I have seen media reports indicated that on a per capita basis, Oregon ha, is relatively low in overall testing availability, you know? Would you or Rebecca or Nicole, anybody who's on the call right now be able to weigh in on that at all?
I can tell you that I've seen those same reports and, um, I, I really want to know where they're getting their tests, you know, their test kits and, and such, because, uh, I, I'm a little jealous. I, uh, agree that, um, that, uh, we have not seen that, that same, um, uh, ability to obtain test kits in the same way. Um, for example, our, uh, every one of our, uh, labs has an Abbott testing machine that we could have up and running today with a 15-minute turnaround time for every test. But those are the test kits that have been rationed, so to speak, you know, by FEMA and that we have only gotten a handful of, um, recently. Now, of course, we've also gotten some reports that maybe that, those aren't the most accurate tests and we're still trying to suss that out, but that's exactly some of the problems that we're up against. And, and I, I do not have that state level or that federal level connection to really understand why are we different, but we very much are different.
Well, I'd sure appreciate either if you could follow up or if our public health people could follow up, if there is anything we can do as, either as a local county or perhaps in concert with other counties, but, but do we need to advocate with OHA, with the governor's office, with our congressional delegation to try and, uh, let, put some pressure on FEMA? You know, I, I, I think it would serve us to have greater testing availability, but first I think we need to know the right door to be knocking on. Thank you.
Okay. Um, moving on here, is there any additional updates from our emergency management team? I don't think Jenny can talk, but, um, Sam, do you have anything you guys can provide as an update?
Commissioner, can you hear me? This is Jenny Damaris.
I can't hear you. Great.
Yeah, sorry. I just had a problem with the very beginning. Um, the one thing I could let you know in your audience is that, uh, we are working on a mass distribution of face coverings for the general public. We're very excited about that. Um, each county was awarded 25,000 face covering masks that could be deployed at our discretion and we have chosen, um, as a unified decision to distribute those to the general public. And first of all, a very, uh, thank you appreciation to the Confederated Tribes of Sletz Indians because they were able to forward to us 10,000 of their allotment of, uh, face coverings that were given to them. So what's taking place in just a very short amount of time here, um, is that we are activating the CERT chapters across the county to help us do with the public-wide distribution on June 13th. And, uh, for the media folks that might be listening, nope, you've not heard about this yet. I've got a message that's coming out to you shortly to help us with some messaging. Um, but in between now and the 13th, we are taking orders from our vulnerable population groups, city, county governments, utilities, public safety to let us know how many employees do they have, how many family members do they have? So we can try and use already established distribution systems to get those face coverings to them. And then we'll take the remainder of those masks, hoping for about 10 to 12 different distribution locations, all taking place at the same time on this coming Saturday. So it's quite a logistics lift for us to be able to do this, but it will be, uh, great to finally be able to have something that we can directly hand to the general public that they would be able to use. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
No questions from me, Commissioner Hall. Questions? You're talking, you're on mute, Commissioner Hall.
Sorry about that. No, no questions, just a big thank you to you, to all the CERT volunteers and certainly to, uh, the Sletz Tribe and, uh, you know, this is a wonderful thing and I hope we can, uh, get the word out widely and quickly.
Hey, Commissioner, um, Hunt, questions for our emergency manager?
No, it's nice to see the partnership with the tribe.
I agree. Okay, thank you, Jenny. Um, moving on to our incident management team update, um, I don't know if Rachel is on, but I see Wiley is on. Any updates from, from that team?
Yeah, this is Rachel. Um, we had a great, um, broadband call last week, um, with folks from USDA all around our county, Lynn County, Benton County, um, WAVE and Pioneer and others who joined. Uh, we are having a follow-up meeting at Thursday at 2:00 PM with our, essentially our steering group or our steering committee or working group, um, for broadband to help move this forward and figure out how we can concretely, uh, go ahead and get our feasibility studies done, which is really the next step in moving this forward. I also found out, um, as most of you probably saw the announcement from, um, board on Friday, allocated about $20 million to broadband in the state, of which 10 million is going to this organ. That is going to be turned around fairly quickly here into grant communities and will include coverage of feasibility studies. So in addition to the EDA funding, we have another opportunity for funding from that pot. Uh, so that's my updates. Wiley?
Hey, this is Wiley. Um, thank you very much, Rachel. Uh, doing some work with the, the Coastal Equity and Inclusion Committee, trying to get some of their project areas, uh, for, for recovery and, uh, meeting with Rosa and a couple of other people. And one of the things we're going to do with them is, uh, leverage their, their connections and, and skills to do some social media for some sourcing and ideas in, uh, Spanish and hope, maybe even mom, that'd be really great. Um, I'm gonna do, uh, reaching out to our new executive director of Economic Development Alliance and of Lincoln County, so Paul Shutima, I might, I might have butchered that, my apologies. Uh, we're gonna meet with him and just run him through the plan and try to get him on board, uh, and, and see what, uh, kind of leadership he, he'll want to take in this effort. Also, uh, some of our C-grant colleagues up and down the coast are looking, uh, uh, for some funding to provide some, uh, uh, technical assistance, uh, in COVID-19 prevention to the, to the ag forestry fishing workforce, though of course, focus on the fishing industry, but this funding's available for those sectors and they're, uh, they're putting in for a grant right now, along with, uh, some of our community health extension workers, um, to support the, the recovery effort. And, and so that's kind of what I got.
Thank you, Rachel and Wiley. Commissioner Hall, questions from, from you?
Not at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Hunt?
Uh, no questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Um, thank you. So, uh, any, we're under commissioner reports now. Um, I don't have a report to give, um, this week. It's just kind of all COVID all the time still. Commissioner Hall, do you have a report?
Uh, nope. All COVID, all the time.
Same, Commissioner Hunt?
Well, it's all COVID all the time, but I think, uh, give a special shout out to all of the county employees and partners that, uh, over the weekend put in a lot of long hours as a result of the outbreak at, uh, Pacific Seafood. So my, uh, thanks to all for the hard work under very difficult.
Yeah, I, I agree with that for sure. Um, all right. So moving on under decision and action items, um, let's see here. Well, let's, let's, let's get a, let's switch gears and then we're going to come back to COVID, but, um, first we have a change in membership to the Lincoln County Planning Commission. Um, and I see our, um, our planning director, Anno Husing, is on. And so, Anno, do you want to kind of set, set the stage here for us? You're on mute if you're talking on.
Now I'm, now I'm there. Hi, hi, everybody. Anno Husing, uh, director of the Lincoln County.
Anno Husing, Director of the Lincoln County Planning and Development Department. Commissioners, as you know, it wasn't that long ago that you took action to appoint two individuals, Scarlett Care and Shaylan Stratton, to our planning commission. Those were vacancies that needed to be filled. We ended up having another vacancy and we chose from the same pool of applicants because it wasn't that long ago that we went out to the public and asked for people to apply to the planning commission for, if they were interested in serving. And if you recall, we had approximately nine to 10 quality candidates. It ended up, we turned out needing another candidate. That's why we're coming to you before you today. And my recommendation is that you have it in front of you as a potential order to appoint Misty Lambrecht to the planning commission. And at that point, we will have a full complement of full-time planning commissioners if that appointment were to be made. I'd be happy to take any questions or talk about Misty or talk about the planning commission. Please let me know what you want to do.
No questions for me. I've seen our materials come through previously as well as the information in the packet. So I will see if Commissioner Hall or Commissioner Hunt have questions. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
No questions.
I have no questions either. So I'll move for approval of the change in the Lincoln County Planning Commission and the appointment of Misty Lambrecht.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Nope, okay, motion carries. Thank you, Anno.
Thank you.
All right, so the next thing we're discussing, and I just want to make this really, really clear for both ourselves and also for people listening today. We're having two different discussions on face coverings. First one we're having a discussion on is a face covering policy for Lincoln County employees. And then that's actually under decision and action item. And then under discussion information, we're having a discussion, no decision today, but a discussion on public face coverings for the public. So as we move through having our discussion first on a face covering policy for Lincoln County employees, I just want to make sure that we can really stay on that topic and not move into the public one because I think it makes it challenging for people to follow. So let's try to stay on task with talking about Lincoln County employee temporary face covering policy. And then once we get through that, we'll move into the discussion on a potential public face covering policy. So I think it's Kristin Mule that's meeting that coverage for us?
Yes, Commissioner. So regarding the face covering policy for Lincoln County facilities, this would apply to employees, it would apply to elected officials, contractors, visitors, volunteers, anybody really entering into county facilities. And currently, you know, most of county facilities are closed. People, departments and offices are seeing people for appointments. So we do have individuals entering into the building. We've been following guidance by Oregon Health Authority that employees do wear face coverings when they can't socially distance and when appropriate. So this is this kind of, I guess, making this a temporary policy while this pandemic is ongoing and some guidance and training for supervisors that's really needed.
And I would add for clarity that this is beyond the courthouse because we already made a policy for that. So this is our additional public buildings. Correct?
Correct. So yes, the courthouse has its own policy that you recently approved. So this would just be for all other county facilities?
I would say in general, I would be supportive of this. I feel like there's one particular issue I feel like we maybe need to discuss or think about, which is the juvenile department. We do have kids that are living there. That is their home. And so I guess the question is, are we requiring them who live there, that is their residence, to be wearing face coverings 24 hours a day? I think that's a little challenging if that's your home. But yet we do have staff members coming in to care for those kids. So I feel like that needs to maybe be pulled apart a little bit. I don't know if there's already been internal discussions on that. Kristin?
Yeah, so let's just talk about that. So just in general, there's no requirement that you wear a face covering while you're in the office, 12 hours a day or eight hours a day, whatever your shift is. There's only a requirement if you aren't able to socially distance from coworkers or if you don't have any kind of physical barrier, if you don't have a private office, you don't have a cubicle. So I think there's some misunderstanding about what the face covering policy is and that's why we need to do the trainings. So we're going to follow the guidance of OHA, which basically says that if you cannot socially distance from coworkers, if you don't have any kind of physical barrier, then yes, you would wear a face covering. We understand that people are not going to be able to wear these all day long while working, especially like cloth face mask, which is hard to breathe on for that long. So we're going to be, you know, looking at accommodations. We're going to be looking at face shields or other coverings that people can breathe on if they are in a department where they're going to have to wear it for a longer period of time. So this is really why we need to get this passed so we can do training, so employees understand, so supervisors understand what the rules are. For individuals who are doing a lot of customer service, most of our departments and offices have already placed up the Plexiglas shields. So if you're dealing with a lot of the public, there's a barrier there which would not require a face mask. Okay, so that's why we really need to do this. So yes, certain departments like juvenile, where you're going to have, kids have their own bedrooms. So you're not going to require, you know, a child to wear a face mask while they're in their own bedroom. It's only when you can't socially distance. And so when you have those interactions that are closer than six feet, would you require them?
Thank you. Commissioner Hall, questions?
Not questions, but just if I could comment that I think this is a really clear policy and some things I have heard from the public about when they have discussed a face covering policy in county facilities, that some of the things I hear most often are addressed in this policy, including providing face coverings for individuals to use who do not have them, that people with physical disabilities that prevent them from easily wearing or removing a face covering are exempted, people with a medical condition that's exacerbated by wearing a face covering, any person of color who may have heightened concerns about racial profiling and harassment due to wearing a face covering in public. Also, not required for children under 12 years of age, though we're encouraging them for nine to 12 year olds. And I think those, that's not the full list, but I think those are the key ones. And certainly reasonably accommodating people while still putting a policy in place that will require this for most employees and members of the public who are in county facilities.
Hey, Commissioner Hunt, questions?
I believe Commissioner Hall did a good job of summarizing the policy and.
Okay. I don't have any additional questions. So with that, someone want to make a motion?
I would move for approval of the order adopting a temporary face covering policy for Lincoln County. Well, it's listed on the agenda as Lincoln County employees, but we're also requiring them for visitors to the facilities. So would legal counsel with describing this as a temporary face covering policy for Lincoln County facilities be adequate and correct?
Yes, I would just change the motion to include just for Lincoln County facilities.
Okay, that is my motion then.
Okay, I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
I'll second it.
Oh, sorry. All right, I said an aye. I think I heard Commissioner Hall. Commissioner Hunt, are you an aye or an a?
I said aye.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay, motion carries. Thanks. All right, next under, excuse me, discussion and information. Reopening Lincoln County Phase Two application process. I was in attendance today at the virtual press conference that took place at 1:00 PM. Their joint information team scheduled. The question was asked by a local media source to OHA directly if our current situation with the outbreak we have in Lincoln County would potentially push us back into Phase One. And the answer was at this time, no. And I know that's a question that many people have been asking. So at this point, it doesn't look like OHA is going to be pushing us back into Phase Zero or whatever we want to call it before we run to Phase One. Additionally, I would say that just for a recap, we had a meeting on Friday to discuss Phase Two. And the commissioners had a consensus that we would not be applying for Phase Two at that time because we were essentially waiting to see how the situation with Pacific Seafoods and the outbreak, I think at that point, we were still at relatively low numbers. They all came in over the weekend, but we were waiting to see what was going to happen with that and have more information. Well, we got a lot more information over the weekend. And I guess I'm inclined when it comes to Phase Two, just to say that I don't want to apply it for that at this time. We have a number of positive cases, obviously, and I feel that we need to stay where we're at and potentially look at doing some other things as well. But I would not be in favor of applying for Phase Two at this time. And I couldn't really tell you when I'd be in favor of that. I feel like we need to let our contact tracers do their jobs and see where we're at with additional cases before assessing that. Wayne, is there anything you wanted, I guess, to add to the kind of phases discussion?
I think there's one more item to discuss. You may recall on Friday afternoon, you asked me to look into the situation we'd been hearing from some in the lodging industry about the 24 hour hold requirement that's currently in place and that's part of our Phase One requirements for reopening lodging in Lincoln County. I did have a conversation with other, especially the folks that have most of the lodging in the county, which is Yawhats, Newport and City, about these particular requirements. And we did have a discussion about what their councils might think about changing that. And I also did a little more research because people were raising the question, well, where did that come from? Why is that even a requirement out there? And what I did find on that particular note is that actually the Oregon Beverage and Lodging Association, which is ORLA, which is the largest lobbying group on behalf of restaurants and lodging properties in Oregon, has 2,000 lodging members, actually put out what they call the Phase One reopening commitment to safety checklist. And front and center in that particular document in their cleaning protocols is a specific requirement that rooms are left vacant for at least 24 hours prior to or after cleaning, if possible. So that is something that's actually out there. It's a best practice. It's being recommended and that's where that came from. And the consensus I gathered from the other cities that I consulted on this is that this is not a requirement that they want to lift at this time. Again, there was even some discussion about whether or not it should continue past Phase One if we ever do get into Phase Two and into Phase Two. That was one of the discussions that at least one city was having. So at this point, that's to the information I wanted to provide you to see if you wanted to discuss any other changes in the lodging requirements.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I weigh in on that subject?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, my thinking and my research, some of the appeals we have received to drop the 24 hour hold from people in the industry have claimed that no other jurisdiction has it. Well, as Mr. Belmont pointed out, that is in ORLA's best practices. Also, I found out that Riverside County, California, has put the exact same requirement in place for lodging facilities in their community. And in Riverside County, two active duty sheriff's deputies, now this was not in any way connected to the lodging industry, but two active duty deputies died of COVID-19 within a 24 hour period. So perhaps that added to their sense of urgency. Just today, Airbnb updated its website. Their guidance to owners, it's not a requirement, but it is their guidance. They are recommending a 24 hour hold for their owners and operators. Now, I did look at the CDC website today and they said a 24 hour hold is only necessary if someone who's occupied the room has tested positive for COVID. But help me out, anybody who is part of this meeting, if I'm, if there's a logical flaw or fallacy here. We recently have seen national reports that 40% of people who have tested positive for COVID didn't know they had it. The results from Pacific Seafood indicate 95% of the people self-described as tested, self-described as, or who tested positive, self-described as asymptomatic. It's, I believe, a HIPAA violation for the lodging property to ask somebody when they check out if they're ill. So how can you, you know, I think at least as long as we're still in Phase One, if we don't require people to operate under the assumption that everybody has it, we are just going to open the door to even greater spread of this virus.
Commissioner Hunt, comments or questions?
Well, I will ask Council Belmont, again, I've got an audio connection that kind of goes in and out, so I may have missed it. But you said you talked with the cities along the oceanfront and the consensus was to keep the 24 hour break in place?
That is correct.
Okay. That answers my question.
Yeah, I guess I'd kind of like to tease a few things apart. I guess, one, talking about the lodging hold. Do we want to leave that where it is? Do we want to come back and have a bigger discussion with cities? Kind of what's the direction that, you know, the board would like to take here? Obviously, we only have jurisdiction in the unaccredited parts. And I believe some cities have this in place and some do not. Is there a thought on how you would like to proceed with that issue?
I'd suggest we keep in communication with the city.
Well, I think going to Phase Two, you remove.
Okay, so Commissioner Hunt, you kind of jumped in there, but I think you said keep it till Phase Two as we had previously decided?
Well, I didn't. I didn't mean to jump in. I thought there was a break in the communication. So I, my feeling is that we've always said that when the county went to Phase Two, and I believe the cities were in agreement with this, that that 24 hour exclusion would be.
Okay. And I'm sorry, Commissioner Hall, what were you saying?
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, again, from a technical or operational standpoint, the state did not, you know, the state did not put any restrictions on lodging. It was our choice as a county and the participating cities to impose this during Phase One. And I felt, you know, at least my opinion was it was appropriate to at least acknowledge the contacts and appeals we've had from the industry because of the fact that it looks like we won't be going to Phase Two anytime soon to consider lifting the hold. But I, you know, I just wanted to get on the record that I do not see. But I, you know, I just wanted to get on the record that I do not see. You know, I certainly understand the economic hit that continues for the industry. But when I think of the general public safety concern, certainly the safety concerns of the employees at these facilities, that I think I am not persuaded that we should look at lifting it right now or anytime soon.
And I would agree with leaving it in place and, you know, reevaluating as we go through this. So it sounds like we have a consensus to stop old at this point. The second thing I wanted to tease apart is just our kind of Phase Two. Again, on Friday, we had a consensus to reevaluate Wednesday when we felt we would have more information and kind of possibly make a decision from there. We actually made a potential meeting for 3:00 on Wednesday. As I said earlier, we got a whole lot of information over the weekend. You know, I am against the Phase Two application process at this point. And I'm hoping maybe we can get a consensus or have a discussion about that today so we can kind of make a determination about our proposed meeting on the 15th. Or excuse me, on the 10th, my apologies.
Well, I'm going to say that, given the fact that contact tracing is just about to begin for for the Pacific seafood cases, I mean, we won't even begin to have data by Wednesday, and so I don't see a purpose in holding the meeting that we had discussed potentially for Wednesday afternoon.
Okay, Commissioner Hunt?
I would agree. I agree. I also think that the more we can try to have meetings on a consistent date and time, I think that's more transparent for the people that are trying to participate even virtually. So I also agree that I think we won't really have complete data that would help us make a decision. So I see, or I would support canceling the special meeting on Wednesday, the 10th.
Okay, and I agree with that. So let's go ahead and cancel that meeting. And then let's, you know, this evolves every day. And so let's have an agenda item for discussion information on our next Monday's meeting where we're Phase Two reopening, which can kind of roll into our general discussion of just how things are going in general. So we'll just continue to have that be a rolling agenda item for the time being. Okay, last up in our discussion today, and I know we have received a ton of public feedback on this. In fact, I'll ask to kind of get that information in a minute here, is public face covering. So this is essentially exploring or discussing what a public face covering mandate would look like. I think we had directed staff last week to answer a couple of questions. And I will start off with trying to get clarity on what those questions were. So I believe the first one was for Legal Counsel Belmont. And that was if Lincoln County created a public face covering order, making it mandatory for people to wear face coverings in public, would that legally cover the whole county or would that only work in unincorporated areas?
Thanks, Commissioners, and we did do a little research on that. And Oregon Law and ORS Chapter 203 says that if we actually adopt an ordinance that exercises what they call police power, and this would be an exercise of our police power, then it can only apply in the city limits through the concurrence of the cities. And that's really kind of the reason why when we were doing the regulations around lodging, we were really implementing an order under an ordinance that sets your emergency services' powers. And that's why we went and sought the concurrence of the cities in order to make it apply within. It wasn't just to get the uniformity across the county, but also to apply it across the entire county. So there are some different authorities that are granted to local jurisdictions under public health laws in ORS Chapter 431 and 433. But those are somewhat unclear, and this is sort of the discussion that the state's having right now as to what, under what authority are they adopting the governor's executive orders and some of the other directions they're giving to us? But to answer in the simplest form, I'd say that the only way you're going to apply an order, if you want to do one across the entire county, is to have concurrence from the cities.
Okay, that's really, I think, helpful information. And with that in mind, I would say that then we probably need to have that discussion with cities while I have some reservations around enforcement of something like this. I'm in favor of it from a public health perspective. I think it's absolutely the right thing to do. I am worried about kind of enforcement. But additionally, I think in terms of where the people are at and where people typically congregate and where people typically go grocery shopping or out in public, it's not as much the unincorporated areas, it's more of our cities. And so I feel like we maybe need to have this discussion with our cities to really discuss this as I'm not sure how effective something would be just affecting the unincorporated areas where the majority of our grocery stores and that kind of stuff are inside of cities.
If I might, just a little bit of information related to that. The city of Lincoln City did have this discussion. They had a pretty extensive discussion, a special council meeting about, it wasn't last Friday, but a week ago Friday, and actually looked at the possibility of adopting their own order or ordinance to apply just within Lincoln City. It had a pretty robust discussion. You could actually go listen to that if you'd like. They did record that particular meeting. And there, even though there was a lot of discussion about doing it, they finally came down to the conclusion that enforcement would be basically impossible. They don't really have the mechanisms, the tools, the resources to do an enforcement. Plus, it would cause some problems. And you might want to talk to the sheriff or public health about what kinds of issues that might raise. But what they ended up doing was deciding to do a much more robust education campaign around face coverings. And that included everything from creating some of their own materials, which they supplied to businesses and people in the community that really complement our Keep Lincoln County, Oregon materials and the posters and information items that we supplied, and then did a number of other things to try and get the community itself to embrace the concept of wearing face coverings. And one of the tools that they put out there that I have heard ended up being fairly effective was they put a reader board at the northern entrance to the city off of Highway 18 that said, "Thank you for wearing," I think it says, "thank you for wearing a mask" in Lincoln City. And at least the information I got back in an email today was that seems to have been having some positive effects by increasing that voluntary compliance and really trying the education things with folks coming into the community. So that was the approach that they did take. I did also discuss this with the city manager in Newport to see whether or not the Newport City Council had taken it up. They have not taken it up in the context of the public. They have done some of the same things we have done around face coverings for their employees and in their own facilities and made some decisions there, very similar to the decisions that we have made today. But it was interesting because I think they raised some of the same concerns around, while the utility of doing this, the necessity of doing this seems to be pretty universal out there, the effectiveness of making it mandatory is really called into question. So that is at least two communities that have weighed in a little bit.
Okay, Sheriff Landers, can you maybe talk about this as a law enforcement perspective? Or maybe you know of other communities that have tried this and what the enforcement issues are there?
I actually, good afternoon, Commissioners, Curtis Landers, Lincoln County Sheriff. I actually don't know of others that have done it, but I'm only envisioning the difficulty and enforcement that we would have. And it's not that I disagree with the message that it would send to make it mandatory. It's just, you know, I'm just picturing the calls that would come in and not having the resources to respond to those calls. And then, you know, what do you do if somebody wears it? You write them a ticket, whatever it is, and then send them on their way? How long will they maintain that? You know, it would be like the Fourth of July trying to enforce fireworks complaints that come in. It's just, it's almost impossible to do based on the resources that we have. You know, so it would be difficult. And also just the fact that, you know, if all the cities didn't go with it, then, you know, in one city that you don't need to wear one and one city or outside the city you do, it'd also be difficult unless everybody did uniformly agree to that. You know, I think at best it would be on a state level if that happened to any kind of enforcement action, or we'd have all agencies combined to enforce something like that would be the best scenario possible. And I don't know if they're going to go that direction or not. Does that help?
Yeah, to be clarity on what our resources are in order to enforce something like that is helpful. So Commissioner Hall, questions, comments?
Madam Chair, thank you. I've got a lot of comments. I hope you will indulge me, but, you know, I'm not only speaking to you and Commissioner Hunt as my colleagues, but to the public who is listening in on this meeting, and then also to our colleagues in city government and things that I would like them to consider and why, after a lot of input, a lot of reading, a lot of research, I think a voluntary policy is not enough. I will agree 100% with the sheriff. It would be much better if this came as a statewide directive. Several state governors have put mandatory face covering orders in effect. Unfortunately, for reasons not known to me, I don't know if anybody here can answer this, but the state of Oregon has not gone in that direction. But I feel that that does not give us the right to abdicate our responsibility to do everything we can to protect the health and safety of citizens of Lincoln County. I just want to quote from a few passages from two articles that I consider particularly valuable. These are recent articles. The articles, they are by scientific professionals. The first one is by a professor of pulmonary and critical care medicine at the University of Washington, where he is advocating for mandatory face covering policies. "We can't and shouldn't expect good Samaritans or fellow customers in retail stores or restaurants to compel mask rebels to comply with a mere recommendation. We should, however, expect all citizens to comply with the law, and if they don't, experience consequences." And yes, I know that this is going to be extremely problematic for law enforcement to enforce if we go in this direction. Again, let's consider the impact of peer pressure and look at how it's taken probably 50, 60 years to stamp out smoking in enclosed public spaces. The law was part of it, but peer pressure was also a part of it. Again, from the same article, "Computer scientists from the University of California, Berkeley, recently modeled that if 80% of the US public wore masks now, COVID-19 transmission rates would decline 12-fold." Again, COVID-19 transmission rates would decline 12-fold if 80% of the public wore masks. You know, Ms. says, "What's the alternative? Every elevator becomes landmine, every retail experience potentially disastrous." Before I move along, again, Mr. Belmont indicated he had some positive feedback about the results of Lincoln City's campaign. You know, I have friends who own and operate businesses there. Unfortunately, I was hearing very different stories that, you know, and also, you know, we've heard stories on the Newport Bay front last week that if one in 20 or one in 30 visitors had face coverings, that would be, you know, that would be about the extent of it. Okay, here's another article from a data scientist at the University of San Francisco. "May 14th, he joined 100 academics in an open letter calling on officials to require cloth masks to be worn in all public places, such as stores, transportation systems, and public buildings." He notes that, as he writes the article, there are now 94 countries who have done this. You know, he talks about the growing science. He acknowledges the fact that in February, the US Surgeon General said that masks were not effective in preventing the general public from catching the virus. The virus. And he says, "This missed the key point. They're extremely effective at preventing its spread." As we keep trying to say over and over again, you don't wear a face covering to protect yourself, you wear a face covering to protect others." Again, another research scientist says, you know, talking about, "One of the very difficult things, I think, for all of us in this as policymakers is the fact that so much is still unknown about this virus, and we like to make solid database decisions, but so much data is lacking." Again, quoting another scientist in this article, "When a simple experiment finds evidence to support an intervention and that intervention has a limited downside, policymakers should act before a randomized trial is done." And again, at the federal level, going back to the earlier Surgeon General statement, "The CDC has now clarified its stance and recommends the public use of homemade face coverings while saving the higher-grade masks for medical professionals." And again, this article cites the same study. 80% of people mask up, then transmission is virtually halted. So that's all I have right now.
Hey, Commissioner Hunt? Oh, you're muted.
I'm no longer muted, I hope it can be heard. Well, in an ideal world, if we were to mandate public face coverings, everyone would comply. And yet, in an ideal world, everyone would recognize the value of face coverings, and we wouldn't need to even pass an ordinance or an order. Unfortunately, the reality is that, in my opinion, the people that see the value of face coverings and would wear face coverings, for the most part, probably do. And I think the people that would not wear face coverings, even if we pass an ordinance, would continue not to do so. So I think the devil's in the details and the realities of trying to enforce such an order. I think it would be extraordinarily difficult and ineffective if we were to do something without the support of the cities. If all of the cities in the county, or the majority of the cities in the county, wanted to discuss order mandating public face coverings, I'm certainly willing to discuss it. But certainly on an isolated basis, I have difficulty supporting it. I think this is one of those situations where there are no good choices, and I'm not sure we even have a good decision. But unless there is broad support from our communities, I think to try and pass an ordinance and have it be in kind of effectiveness is remote. And I think it could even be counterproductive promoting confrontations between individuals that are wearing face coverings and individuals that are not. So that's my thoughts. If all of the cities want to get on board, I'm certainly open to additional discussion.
Madam Chair, could I jump in again? Yeah, and, and I understand the validity of the points Commissioner Hunt is making. And I would suggest, at very least, we do some more active outreach to the cities on this. One thing, I'm looking back at my notes, one thing I forgot to mention. I had a couple of business owners that I spoke to actually urge me to do it because, you know, or urge us to go in this direction because essentially they said, you know, if you do it, then the government's the bad guy. It takes the onus off my back. And for example, I recently went in a Newport business the other day to pick up some pet care supplies. And there was a large sign in the, in a reader board sign right inside. "Six-foot distancing required by executive order." You know, in other words, putting the onus on the state. You know, the, a lot of the governor's orders had no real enforcement teeth, such as the 50-mile travel restriction. Obviously, not everybody followed it, but significant numbers of people did. So I understand there's arguments to be made on both sides. But I'm still convinced that this is maybe not the easy thing to do or the popular thing to do, but it is the right thing to do.
And I would disagree. I, I, excuse me, I would agree, not disagree, that it is the right thing to do. I guess I, I feel like in light of us creating one, it'll only be applicable to unincorporated areas. It's like the highest risk is inside our cities. That's where people shop. That's where most of the businesses are. So I feel like we probably all need to do some work on talking with cities and see if we can pass some type of joint thing or create some type of joint situation. I feel like that would maybe be the best way to go. And then in addition to that, I feel like I really need to get some clarity from maybe legal counsel and also the sheriff's office or other law enforcement agencies on what that process would even look like. Obviously, if you define what a face covering is, but also just things like, you know, if you're in the store and you see someone not wearing one, if we have no ability to enforce that, you know, what do we kind of do with that? I guess I need to think through and also get some understanding from some partners on how we would, how we would, I guess, address that. Because I can know right now, there's going to be people emailing us and calling dispatch and that kind of stuff saying, I saw somebody at Fred Meyer's or Safeway or whatever, and they're not wearing one. And I guess I need to understand how we'd be dealing with that or how we wouldn't be dealing with it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah, the last thing we want to do is encourage vigilanteism, but and individuals harassing others. But can I suggest maybe one point of inquiry for staff would be to look at the states where there has been a state-level executive order? What kind of enforcement mechanisms and penalties those orders have, have included? And if that is something that's potentially applicable here? So I'll just say again, we, this is a conversation we need to have with our city partners. But I'm just going to say, tick tock, tick tock. 155 confirmed cases in our county now. And anybody is living in, in a dream if they think these numbers are not going to continue to climb. And I hope I'm proven wrong, but climb exponentially. The horse may be out of the barn, but perhaps it hasn't escaped the fence yet. And we still have a, an opportunity to contain it to some degree. Thank you.
Okay, so I, I guess I, I feel like we need to maybe have a conversation with cities. That's what I'm feeling about the outcome of this conversation we had to do that. I think if all three of us individually can reach out to the people we know with cities, you know, to kind of have that discussion, but also look at having some type of joint meeting or maybe, I think Wayne, you had had a discussion with city managers. So maybe you can follow up and ask them to kind of discuss it. Their prospective council meetings, depending on when those are coming up.
I will do that.
Okay. And I think Commissioner Hall's point about seeing orders that have been presented at states or in other municipalities, I think that would be helpful as well. And I guess the other thing I'm going to ask is, we've gotten a lot of feedback, a lot of public comment. In fact, I think Casey or Christie, if you're on the line, if you can kind of give us a tally of that public comment and how many kind of yays or nays we've gotten around face coverings, I think that would be helpful. I know we've had a lot of responses.
Hi, this is Christie. I don't have a current tally on what we've received since Friday. We have received about 12 additional emails, more leaning towards adding face coverings. And those have all been uploaded to the meeting website.
Great, thank you. I guess the other thing I would ask the public is, you know, we've gotten a lot of feedback, kind of yes or no. But I guess what I need to be back on, it's just some creative thinking on how we would go about enforcing this, or is there some kind of positive reinforcement mechanism we can employ? You know, I'm worried about kind of self-enforcement and people getting into confrontations. We've seen some pretty deadly confrontations in other communities. But I think if people have some good ideas on how businesses can help enforce that or, like I said, kind of positive reinforcement type of things, I think that's the type of creativity we need. While I am in favor of an order, what I'm really in favor of is people actually wearing them. That's, that's the ultimate goal I want, is people to actually wear them. Whether they're motivated by an order or motivated by peer pressure or motivated by fear, frankly, my guess is with all the cases we have in our community that are confirmed now, a lot of people may start wearing them because they're, they're afraid. It's finally in our community and we know that. So I want people to wear them. And so I feel like if constituents listening can think of some creative ideas to get that compliance in wearing them, I would like to hear those. I think just passing an order and we have no enforcement mechanism, I'm not convinced it's going to create people wearing them. So I guess that's some feedback I would like from the public as well. And it looks like we will try to have a conversation with cities and then circle back on, on this one. I guess next, next Monday or before that, if we have, have discussion with cities. All right, I think the last thing on our agenda for today, which didn't make it on the agenda, but I had a note from our Public Works Director is in relation to county parks. Our county park days areas haven't been open. We were scheduled, I think, to open camping tomorrow in our county parks. Again, this is not parks in all of Lincoln County, but just the parks that Lincoln County owns and operates. And the question is, do we still want to go forward with opening up camping in Lincoln County parks with recent news of the COVID outbreak in our community? I'd be inclined to say no, let's hold off on that for the time being, but wanted to bring that up to the board. Commissioner Hall, thoughts, comments on county parks?
Yeah, I, I would be in favor of not opening camping in county parks at this time, except within this very specific exceptions we've made for essential workers and the other folks that were covered in the original lodging order.
Commissioner Hunt?
I agree.
Okay, Wayne, do we need a, do we need a different motion on this?
No, I think just give that, make a motion to that effect. It's in the record and we can act on that.
Do we do need a motion?
Yeah, why don't you do a motion, just so we can record that?
I'll make a motion that we delay opening of camping inside county parks for the time being.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Okay, our next Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting, we again have canceled Wednesday, June 10th. Our next one is Monday, June 15th at 3:00 PM. In closing, I would just say that, you know, we've been watching this situation with COVID unfold around the world. We've seen what's happened in, in cities like New York and countries like Italy and others. And we've been told by our Health Department Director many times over the last several months that it is here in this community, you know, it is here. And I think now with the testing we've recently done and the outbreak we have at Pax Seafoods, we know that for sure. It is here. And I just want to remind people to continue doing all the things that we have talked about over the last several months of event spread. And to please do that with vigilance, I think, even speaking for myself, I think sometimes as we go through this, you kind of almost get adrenal fatigue and you, you kind of forget you want to be washing your hands as much as you should be. So please, everybody, wash hands, practice social distancing, isolate yourself if you think you have been exposed, and wear your face coverings when you're out in public. So just want to remind everybody of those tips as we move forward and please stay safe. Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and thanks, everybody.